Along with black kids. I don't know if you have a report, and they were only suspended for two days. I don't know if I can hear the report and see that, but I would definitely like to see it. I would also like to know why would they only get a two-day suspension, uh, suspension for something that drastic?
Well, I'd be happy to look into it. I do not have the information regarding that incident to be able to respond appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Just making maybe you can follow up. Yes, I appreciate that. Any other comments? As always, we appreciate you showing up. Yeah, give us an update on score this year. All right, I believe. Thank you. All right, uh, we were at the first opportunity in our city council meeting for citizen input. Uh, so citizens that would like to speak to the city council on non-agenda items, uh, please come up to the microphone up front, introduce yourself by name and address, direct your comments to me, and try to limit those to less than five minutes. Come on.
Good evening. My name is Jesus Rome.
Turn the microphone.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Okay, that's a little left button in a little. All right, good evening. My name is Jesus Rome, uh, address is 225 Northwest, you go up to Sterling, Oregon. And what else do you need to know? So, uh, first time being in the city halls, beautiful building. I'm hoping to get a tour of eventually here. There was a gentleman that said darkness cannot grab all darkness, only light can. That was by Robert Mark Luther King. And we have had a great event for the last twenty years. And this event has been a light toward humanity for, for a while. So I'm just want to, um, show you about what's going on. We're gonna be, it's, uh, January sixteenth from eleven to one o'clock. We're gonna have several speakers. Uh, I'm also going to be the keynote this year. Uh, they're trying to save money on budget, so I'd like to be that, uh, person. Um, but we'll have, uh, the high school marching band, a high school band, um, play. Uh, we'll have several, um, speakers, um, high school students talking about what's going on between weeks of them. So which is gonna be a great event. We're excited to have it in this beautiful building. And we want to thank city hall and, uh, council members for allowing us to have it here this coming, uh, year. So we're really excited about that. Um, and we'll be snacks and refreshments to keep, uh, keep the events going. Uh, so I, I don't think I have anything else, but if you guys have questions about the event, I also love flyers. I don't know if there's a place where I can put the flyers in the event. And, um, and I think I did email, um, email as well about the MLK celebration as well. So we're just really excited to do it again, and we're, um, it's just a wonderful. Uh, I know people travel from all around the state. I've heard people come from all across state just to attend this event every year. And so we're the only city in eastern Oregon that has this event. And, uh, we should continue to, um, celebrate. It's a collaboration in the city, pastors, a lot of city officials, um, and high school students as well, and our permanent cultural arts coalition that exists on every year. So just really excited and just hope you all can attend.
Thank you.
Hey Zeus, um, so it's Martin Luther King Celebration on Monday the sixteenth, and you wanna walk?
Do a piece walk again?
Yep. And you're gonna start out front?
Yep, out front, not at the church's time, just at city hall.
Okay, out front, steps, city hall, a lot of clock. Do a walk, and then go back in here and have celebration.
Right, and speeches.
You know what? Don't sell yourself short. I'm sure you'll be a great speaker.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be fun.
Awesome. Counselor?
And, um, you mentioned, uh, use the city hall and stuff, and it, it's not the city council that's letting, I mean, this event happen here. It's, you know, this is the city's building, and so I'm thrilled to hear that it's taking place here. And I, I look forward to hearing about this kind of event taking place here because it's the city's hall, it's not our hall. We, we're just, we're guests here on behalf of the city ourself, and so I'm, I'm, I'm excited to hear that this is occurring here because that's, that's what this place is for. So thank you for, for sharing the invite with us because we're guests here too.
Any other questions? I almost skipped for five minutes, so I can keep on the line.
Thank you, Jesus. All right, others? Okay, so we're gonna move on to consent agenda items, items A through P J. So are there any of those that we need to pull from the consent agenda? I'm not seeing any. Is there any public, uh, comment on consent agenda items A through J? Not seeing any. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items I presented, A through J?
Second.
Second, then moved by councilor Carter, second by councilor Grom, and we approve the consent agenda items A through J as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Um, on the public hearing, supplemental budget number two fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Are there any declarations of conflict interest from the council? Seeing none, uh, you will now have the, uh, hearing guideline presented by the city senate.
The city is holding a public hearing to supplement the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. The city council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision in this meeting. Hearing process will begin with a staff report by city manager Smith. Following the presentation and staff report, the city council will take public testimony. The council requests that all people wishing to testify give their name and mailing address before testifying. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the city council. Written testimony will be accepted. After everyone wishing to testify has had not been candid to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
We're now open the hearing. Uh, suit staff will now present the report.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, this is really a little bit of a, out of our normal practice as far as timing of a supplemental budget, but there are two issues that really drove this. One is the assumption of operations at EOTech, and then the other is some very large, um, public works projects that we did not, we were not ready to say, yeah, they're gonna happen when we adopted the original budget. And so now they've materialized, and so we're ready to, uh, request, uh, authorization to go forward in spending, uh, and receiving the, the funds necessary for those. So I'm gonna go through and hit the highlights on, on the major changes. Uh, another one that isn't a major dollar amount change, we have the Oregon Paid Leave Act that was adopted and, and came into effect January first. And so that requires some additional withholding from employees, but also the city makes a contribution to that. And so we're making small adjustments through all the personnel budgets, uh, in the city. And we, we just chose to put that into this supplemental as we were bringing it forward, uh, on these other two major issues. But they, that, that's another thing that you'll see. So first in the, in the general fund, this is, uh, there are just a couple of things. One is all of those changes in the personnel lines. But as, um, the, the largest one in the general fund is, um, Amazon, uh, as they were applying for enterprise zone, as they were submitting enterprise zone applications, they, they paid an application fee, and we received that. But our intentions, uh, because we talked, we talked a couple meetings ago about our industrial lands, um, dilemmas, as they have purchased all of our large parcels and us needing to start the process to, to try to get some more of that large parcel land available. Uh, we, we wanna bring that application fee into the general fund to pay, to start paying consultants to help us make those proper applications with the state and so forth. So that's the change, um, in the general fund.
That's a hundred and twenty?
That's a hundred and twenty thousand, yes.
Got a big one in there, is that police operations?
Yeah, there were some increases, um, because we did not know what the union contract was going to include. So there was some increases in there that, uh, we, you know, we could have waited until the, the spring traditional time to do that, but we just included that in this upfront. All right, in the, the largest one is, is, is a kind of a combination of, uh, two, two funds. The reserve fund, uh, has, has the largest change, and it is, uh, kind of basically two areas. One, uh, under the bipartisan infrastructure law, we received some funding for the airport that we're moving forward, uh, building some, um, fully enclosed hangars. And so we, we weren't sure when that funding was gonna come through when we did the original budget. Again, it's come through, so we're ready to start the project, and, uh, so we've, uh, made that, we're making that recommendation. The other one in the reserve fund though is about four million dollars, um, for the construction of a waterline that will service, um, potentially, uh, in the future, all three of the Amazon campuses that we've had enterprise zone applications for, uh, that are all along the built road. And that is both the four million dollars that, that we would spend building the waterline, but also four million dollars that they're reimbursing us to build the line. So it looks like we're adding four million dollars to our budget, and we are, but we're, it, it is not coming out of the rate base. This is all being paid for by the, by Amazon, by the industrial, the future industrial user. And then there are a number of smaller, uh, water projects, again, that we weren't exactly sure how they were gonna go forward, um, as we were putting the original budget together. Um, but those are all, um, lined out, uh, in the, in the reserve fund, coming out of the water portion of that. And then the last one, as I mentioned, is, is making changes to where we're taking over direct operations of the EOTech. So in fund number twenty-five, uh, we're making some changes in, uh, future revenues and then, uh, really changing the structure of how we have been paying for services. Because we had just been really tracking only the large, kind of overarching numbers that we got from VenueWorks, but we are now gonna be doing every line item like we do, um, on every department within the city. And so we needed to adjust the budget so that we could, could see all of those separate line items. And really, there are a few, again, some of the smaller funds, oh, I guess one other that I wanna highlight. So in our efforts, um, with the new IT department, we have taken on a couple of new customers, and with that also added, uh, a couple of staff members. And so we are showing the rev, increase in revenue as well as the increase in cost, uh, based on those, those two changes. And those are the, kind of the large items, and I'd be happy to answer any, any questions or talk about any of the more details if you like.
Okay, there's, um, we're gonna have some time for council comments here in just a second. I'm gonna take public testimony first, so people wishing to speak, again, are asked to come up to the microphone up front to introduce themselves by name and mailing address, submit your testimony in a one to five minutes, uh, and direct your comments to me. Are there any public people that, or persons in the audience that would like to speak to supplemental budget number? Hearing done. I'm gonna close the hearing. Counsel, do you have any other further questions? One of the questions I had, Mr. Smith, was, um, on the EOTech operations fund. How does that number align with what we had historically, uh, hired VenueWorks for?
So it is, it is, um, right in the, in the, in, kind of in line. You know, we've been paying them approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars in a management fee on top of, kind of, the operational costs. And so, um, that, being able to absorb that into paying for the day-to-day operations, it's really in the same, kind of in the same ballpark.
And this is, uh, not fiscal year contributions?
Yeah, this is just a half year.
Okay, so this is two hundred and, or three hundred and twenty-eight thousand per half year? And costs us six fifty per, uh, annual?
Well, I, I think we're unclear exactly on the cost because, again, we weren't getting as detailed information as we wanted from VenueWorks. So these are some estimates. We're hoping after, you know, the three months of, of some more actual costs that, that we see coming through, we will have a better idea as we look at putting together the next fiscal year's budget.
And these are just expenses? They just don't have offsets for revenue, right? So?
So, I mean, we are showing an increase in, you know, roughly a hundred thousand in service charges, which is our event revenue book as well.
Okay, pass it through. So, um, you're saying that in, in regards to the, uh, them not being provided that information, were they absorbing some of these costs, or they, I mean, how is?
No, it was more about how they were accounting for them and, kind of, tracking them. That they didn't follow along some of the same procedures that we would follow in keeping track of where those different costs were going. And so that's why some of these areas, the specific line items, are a little bit of a, of a, of an estimate.
Okay, but we paid bills, right?
Yes, yes.
So we know how much we paid them?
We know how much we paid them.
Okay.
In, in big, broad categories, but not broken down.
That's what I mean, is we know how much we paid them.
Yes.
And we know how much we're asking for.
And we're in the same ballpark.
How close is the ballpark? Big ballpark, little ballpark?
Well, as a, as far as a half year, I think we're, you know, we're within a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars of, of where they were for a half year.
Other questions?
Uh, would the, okay, would the, uh, paying for the AWS for Amazon, I know they're gonna pay it back, but how long do they have before they pay it back? Are they gonna be, uh, a month, summer?
No, we, no, we, we bill, we send a, an invoice monthly. As soon as we get a bill from the contractor, we submit it to them, and, and it, it's an online process, so it turns over. I'm not saying every time it's in thirty days, but I think pretty much within sixty days, we're getting paid.
Okay.
So it's not a long time.
And so you, you, when we do the supplemental budget from the standpoint, that do we always do a, uh, public hearing for it?
Once it, it hits a certain percentage, yes, we have to do a public hearing. If it's a smaller amount, then no, we can just do a normal, kind of, presentation.
It's a fairly large.
It is a very large amount.
How about other comments? All right, we're gonna move on to resolutions portion of our agenda, and resolution two-two-four-nine. If, if the council, do we have to do these in order? Can the council move up resolution two-two-five-one since we're talking about it right now, to supplemental fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget? Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay, that's legal. All right. Is the council looking for that?
Yes.
We're kind of in that mindset already. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the council about, um, resolution number two-two-five-one? How about public comments to resolution number two-two-five-one supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution number two-two-five-one, lay it on record?
Second.
Then moved by councilor McCarthy, second by councilor Hartman, that we need adopt for two-two-five-one, and lay it on record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I don't have yet to vote. Well, except for like one at the time. That's what we want those tonight. All right, I guess if somebody asked, then, 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 then. Yep, four, three. All right, resolution two-two-four-nine, review and approval of building code updates. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the way building codes work in the state of Oregon is that the state adopts them and we administer them. Um, and so as the state adopts a new version of a certain code, then we are required to adopt a new version of the code. And that's what is in this twenty-two forty-nine before each night, is to come into alignment with the codes, current codes adopted by the state of Oregon. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, Mr. Smith, does this make building in Hermiston easier or harder? No comment?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would have to say it, it makes it harder. I mean, almost all the time when codes are changed, it makes things more complicated, more difficult.
But nothing you need just to earn a bid.
Right, it doesn't be anywhere statewide.
Yes, councilor?
Is this going to require changes to buildings that we already have?
No, that, um, any, and even if something has, um, kind of gone through code approval process and, and it's not started construction yet, they would still have that approval under the old code.
Any other questions, councilor? Any public comment about resolution two-two-four-nine, review and approval of building code updates? Seeing none. Roll call. Oh, can I get a motion first, sorry. Second, moved by councilor Carter, second by councilor Grom, that we adopt resolution two-two-four-nine, and lay it on record. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Seven zero. Resolution two-two-five-zero, awarding a contract to RNG Excavating for well number five, water system improvements.
Yeah, so I'll ask Mr. Morgan to take this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is project, uh, for this evening. I included, uh, kind of, a good amount of information in the staff report this evening uh, from our recently updated water system master plan. You'll remember, uh, we updated that back about two thousand and nineteen. And so it's proven to be very valuable in guiding a lot of our investments here, um, recently. So this project, uh, will upgrade, uh, pumps, motors, add about twelve hundred, uh, linear feet of new piping. Uh, essentially, well number five is located in the vicinity of Theater Sports Park. Uh, that additional piping will run, uh, behind the northern field at Theater Sports Park and connect up in the vicinity of, uh, Theater Lane and Gear, or, yeah, Gear Road, um, ultimately to help loop that system and make it more efficient. Uh, the increase in, uh, pump and motor capacity, uh, will add about a thousand gallons per minute of water supply, uh, to our system. And, uh, so that shows up as one of the recommendations in our water system master plan. Uh, in adding a thousand GPM of water supply capacity, ultimately increases the citywide ability of pumped, uh, water capacity by about eleven percent. Um, also, I wanna make sure to kind of reference because I, I figured the question may come up that, uh, before we start adding additional pumping capacity, what are we doing to conserve water? And so that was, uh, discussed quite, uh, at length in the water system master plan. Uh, that's really the first recommendation for increasing your, uh, water capacity is to do water conservation first. So you'll remember, uh, the council back in two thousand and seventeen adopted a new rate structure to, uh, change from a inclining block schedule or a declining block schedule to an inclining block schedule. Ultimately, that encourages water conservation, uh, by the users. Uh, we now have four summers' worth of, um, water demand, uh, figures, and it's become very evident that, uh, customers have responded and conserved water. Uh, just looking at the peak month of twenty twenty-two compared to the peak month of twenty eighteen, uh, our citywide water consumption is down about thirteen percent, uh, which is, uh, pretty significant and, and I think impressive. Uh, but probably more impressive is, uh, we've continued to grow and add, um, customers, residential customers, commercial customers since that time. And so when you look at, um, the, uh, total amount of water consumed, uh, per customer now uh, in twenty twenty-two compared to twenty eighteen, uh, we're actually down about twenty-two percent compared to where we were in twenty eighteen. So, uh, that coupled with, uh, these expansions to, um, additional pumping capacity, I think sets us up very well for, uh, continued future, uh, growth of the city. Uh, so hopefully, uh, we don't have to be coming back for maybe five to ten years or so, depending on, uh, the velocity of continued growth, to start talking about going out after additional water rights and other types of developments to increase our water supply capacity. So, uh, those are all good things. Um, I included a couple of graphs in there. Uh, the, uh, recommended contractor is RNG Excavating. Uh, it was good. We got, uh, five, uh, responsive bidders, uh, to bid on the project. Uh, and so we feel, uh, that those, those members that came in were all relatively in the same vicinity of each other. We feel like, uh, that's, that's what the cost is going to be. It came in higher than what the engineer's estimate was going to be. Uh, but again, I think, uh, this is one of those projects that, uh, it's never going to go away, and frankly, it's probably never going to get any cheaper. So, uh, we have the capacity in the, uh, utility fund, and so I would recommend awarding the contract to RNG, uh, Excavating to do the work of well number five.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Uh, the engineer's estimate, I mean, it's not fifty percent off, but it's pretty close. Are those things that we can look forward to in the future in, in this bidding environment? And if so, are we adjusting in our, um, CIP appropriately?
Yeah, so I think, uh, I got an answer on why those numbers came in the way that they were. The engineers were, uh, quite frustrated that the numbers came in the way they were. Uh, what it was is all related mainly, almost ninety percent of that deep, uh, difference comes from the pumps and motors that were snacked out. Uh, Anderson Perry had received a quote for those pumps and motors back in August from a specific vendor, and that vendor also provided the numbers for almost all of the folks who bid on this project. So, uh, they couldn't really do much more homework other than going out and getting additional quotes, you know, closer to the time that it was, uh, bid. So that's why I mentioned, seeing that, you know, we had five bids all come in within the same range, tells me that, you know, if we were to go out and just try and rebid it immediately, we're gonna probably see the exact same numbers, so.
That's my understanding that, uh, metals aren't gonna be cheap. It's gonna be expensive to, you know, put a pipe being on that switch. How about other questions from the council? Okay. Any public comment on resolution two-two-five-zero, awarding the contract RNG Excavating for well number five, water system? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution two-two-five-zero, and lay it on record?
Second.
Then moved by councilor Grom, I believe it was councilor McCarthy that seconded it. Uh, to approve the resolution two-two-five-zero. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Seven zero. Resolution two-two-five-two, review and approval of master fee schedule.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this, um, this proposed changes in two areas. First, the building department fees, and really this is to reflect some of the changes that were made, um, to the building codes as we talked about earlier. And then our annual, um, water and sewer rate, uh, adjustment. And as, um, was written in your staff report, um, basically, uh, the engineering news records, construction cost index, if we take a three-year average, it's just a little over five percent. And this, um, impact on a, on a average monthly increase is about a little over five dollars and thirty cents for, uh, the average residential customer. And you can see, you know, that impacts differently in different months of the year just because of usage. And, you know, we'll talk about it on the next item as far as the, uh, CIP and, you know, that this keeps us up with the plans that we made when we initially adopted that so that we can continue to maintain and, uh, keep our system up to date and, and providing healthy, safe water. So we happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any council comments?
Okay, this is on, uh, resolution two-two-fifty-two?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I was looking at the, this is street department tenders for the roundabout. And it's coming in at two, two million and two hundred thousand. I think there's two of them that, uh, we're looking at. And I think there's two of them that we're looking at for roundabouts. One was on Highland Avenue, First Street intersection.
Okay, I think you're looking at the CIP, which would be on
Tenet.
The next item after this one?
Okay.
And so we can address those questions then.
Any other questions about Resolution 2252, approval of the master fee schedule? Okay, any pop comments? Can I get a motion to approve Resolution or adopt Resolution 2252 on record?
Second.
Then moved by Councilwoman, pardon, seconded by Councilwoman, then we adopt Resolution 2252 and lay it on record. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimous, six seven zero. Never fund raise water rates or sewer rates, but in order to keep our city healthy and keep up with the cost of living, unfortunately, that is one of the things that we have to pass along for our consumers and constituents. And the water and sewer, the street department, all those folks are out there working hard and doing a good job improving the infrastructure that we have in our community. And I want to applaud them for their hard work and a fiscal responsibility as well to maintain the costs as best they can. But as you can see in the previous budget, you know, we're 50% too high on the well replacement. Those funds have to come in somewhere, unfortunately. On to water, sewer, and street five-year capital improvement plan update, Mr. Smith.
I'll ask Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll remember that we began the process of adopting our first comprehensive capital improvement plan back in 2017. That's been updated again in 2019 as well as 2021. The intention from the time we adopted the first capital improvement plan was to provide us with a five-year planning window to begin to focus on projects, get a good idea of when they would generally occur, and start to marshal the resources in order to go ahead and make actual budget requests and those types of things. And so it was quite the effort, the first time when we first developed it, to develop all of the projects and get our heads really wrapped around what are all of the potential issues out there that we need to be prepared for and prepared to spend money on in the relatively foreseeable future. We're now at the point where I think all of the departments and everyone is pretty familiar and feels good about utilizing the capital improvement plan. And so we didn't really spend nearly as much time this time going in and looking for new projects to add in to the capital improvement plan. I directed the various departments to really just look in their appendices for projects to potentially pull forward into that five-year planning horizon. So also, I guess, I would mention, the way that it's set up is we're looking at about, you know, things that we will plan to spend money on over the next five years, and then each department has also an appendix, which has a lot of other projects that are listed in there. A lot of them are still very important and necessary, but when it comes down to trade-offs based on how much resource we have available, they don't get pulled into that five-year planning window. So I think since we've updated the sewer collection system master plan back in 2019, the water system master plan back in 2018, most of those larger projects have been incorporated and added into our appendix. And so that's why we're really just pulled from our appendix this year. We also made sure to, probably the biggest effort that we undertook with this year's update was having Anderson Perry go through each one of those projects and actually kind of ground-truth each one of those. You know, it's been, in the case of some of these, they've been in that plan for five years. Things change, you know, through other private development, those types of things. So we want to make sure, go through each one, make sure that each one still makes sense as well as adjusting each one for, you know, what we're seeing on the ground today in terms of actual prices rather than just applying kind of an across-the-board cost increase. So that's why I think some of the costs on some of these projects are going up a little bit more aggressively than we have seen on some of them in years past, and we, we're just moving them forward. Also important to keep in mind, the capital improvement plan is, I guess I would say, even less committal than adopting a budget. You're not, by approving the capital improvement plan, you're not approving or committing to spending any of these dollars first and foremost. And then really what this document does is it helps staff prepare for submitting budget requests when we get to budget time. So this doesn't even add them into this year's budget or change the actual adopted budget. What it does is it helps staff get ready for actually submitting those budget requests when they come around. But since this is a multi-year, kind of longer timeframe, it was appropriate to set it up this way. So I'll go through relatively high level on each one of the departments, and I won't get into each one of the projects. But on the water side of things, coming up here in the, we're going to go out to bid here next week, actually, on our North First Place water main replacement, that's going to take place here this calendar year. That project goes from Hermiston Avenue almost all the way out to Elm. That's been combined with the North First Place roadway reconstruction project, and so I've been talking about that for quite a while. It's going to be a pretty major undertaking. That'll replace almost 4,000 feet of water main that's estimated, I mean, it's kind of a checkerboard through there, but the lion's share of it is estimated to date back to the 1920s. After that, in 2024, we intend to do another major main replacement project, generally in the vicinity of the downtown core, mainly along East Class as well as some on East Main Street. Again, most of that piping dates back to the 1920s. Each one of those projects is about a mile and a half of main replacement, and so I think without any context, it's easy to think, geez, we're going to have the whole city replaced in 10 years, but we have 93 miles of water main in the city. So replacing a mile and a half of pipe each year, it would take us about 60 years to fully replace all of our water mains within the city. So a lot of those are significantly newer than 1920, but if we don't continue to stay up on it and replacing those oldest ones first, then it can quickly get out of hand. So I think the pace of replacement that we're on right now for replacing those water mains is pretty appropriate and I think sustainable for quite a basic future. In 2025, we're going to be constructing a new booster pump station in Highland Summit Park neighborhood. Simultaneously, we'll be doing some replacement valves in East Highland Avenue and replacing some water main in that vicinity. Those two projects together are going to increase water pressure mainly to the entire southeast quadrant of the city and make it a lot more efficient to provide water down that quadrant of the city. Then in 2026, we plan to do another major piping replacement project over on Orchard Avenue. On the sewer side of things, lift number three decommissioning project, my least favorite project in quite some time, should hopefully wrap up in this calendar year, 2023. Additionally, we plan on reconstructing lift station number four. 2024, we'll be replacing another lift station, lift station number seven, as well as starting to address some of the sewer main sections that were identified in our sewer collection system study that we did back in 2019. You know, that study went through and literally sent a camera down a lot of the sections of pipe that we knew were bad, and so several of those will start to get addressed, one of them being on East Evelyn Avenue that should help address some capacity issues of sewer down in the, our industrial, suburban industrial portion of the city, as well as replacing a relatively small section in northeast Seventh Street. But I think that's going to teach us a lot about how to handle some of these sewer main replacement projects moving forward. In 2025, we're not going to be doing too many main replacements at this point, but the, the reason for that is, you'll remember when we fired up the new recycled water treatment plant back in 2014, at the time, the, the engineers estimated that most of those systems, so the membranes for filtering, the pumps, motors, a lot of those things, had around a 10-year design life. And so that means that come 2024, 2025 timeframe, we've got to be prepared to make some pretty significant reinvestments back in the treatment plant. So we're aligning our resources to be prepared to do that without having to go out and borrow those funds. I think the, the good news at this point that we're hearing from our membrane supplier is that our membrane appears to be in really good shape, and that's one of the reasons why I mentioned the original design life was 10 years. 2025 is already at 11 years, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to squeeze several more years out of it after that. So that's one of those really large items that is a little bit of an unknown, so we want to be prepared for it. But if that doesn't come into pass, then I think as we get closer to 2025, we can pull some of those other main replacement projects forward. Yeah, so that's mainly on the sewer side. On the street side of things, again, I already mentioned the North First Place reconstruction project that's going to be causing a lot of, tearing up a lot of that section of the road between Hermiston Avenue and Elm. Again, you'll remember that project is fully paid for by a state earmark. Additionally, we'll finally be to the point of doing construction of the new connection of East Penny Avenue, which is down in the southern industrial section near Ranch Home. That will finally connect Kelly Boulevard and South Hermiston Industrial Park directly onto Highway 395. That project is funded 50% through the state, through a great firm, Business Oregon, and then council already approved about a year ago, the other 50% coming from a portion of our ARPA funds from the federal government. Then in 2024, again, it's still subject to final discussions with the property owner on realignment, but we hope to finally proceed with the Gear Harper Road intersection realignment in calendar year 2024. Then in 2026, we hope to see a project widening West Theater Lane. We continue to see a lot of growth on the northern half of the city. And then also, it's going to reconstruct a good portion of that. If you've driven that portion of West Theater Lane these days, kind of by goodwill, it definitely, it's one of our kind of higher-traffic streets that needs a lot more work here. And then also in 2026, we're planning for reconstructing the city-owned parking lot that's here between Second Street and 395. It definitely needs some significant help. So that's kind of a highlight on the projects that are planned in the five-year planning window. I already mentioned, adoption of the CIP doesn't actually commit any funding. Also, I included in the staff report, I used a template from the Infrastructure Finance Authority to run a five-year pro forma on where the water and sewer utility funds will stand when we plug in, assuming making these level of investments each year. And so there's still a lot of unknowns, especially start to get out, you know, two or three years. But I think the general takeaway is that the city council still remains in control of the budget process every single year. And so if we see, you know, a project next year comes in, you know, all the activity we expected, or there was an emergency and we needed to, you know, replace a major pump or something like that, we have the ability to push those out in the future. But overall, this level of investment is, generally leaves us with a positive fund balance from year to year and definitely by the end of the, the planning horizon. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. When you say the North First Place is fully paid for by a state earmark, are there cost escalators that were included with that?
No, I would say what we did was, what we did was, we value engineered the project, I guess you'd say. So we originally, when we went out for that, for that earmark back in 2016, early before 2017, it was a larger project, it rebuilt all the way up to Harper Road. But when we found out that we were not going to be getting the money until 2023, we went and did a two-inch overlay on the portion of first from Elm and up to Harper, and so that really increased the capacity of that road. So, so we took that portion off, and then additionally, when Anderson Perry ran the original cost estimate, they had already inflated it at 4% a year and assumed construction not occurring until 2020. So I feel pretty good about where we're at on being able to come in well under that original earmark figure.
And all of our other CIP estimates, they have some sort of cost escalator included. So if we're talking 2024 or 2025, those things are taken into effect?
Correct, yeah. And you'll see a lot of them, you know, they have when the planned year is for construction.
Sure.
So just out of curiosity, on, have we been, like, kind of keeping an eye on the cost of that membrane, you know, how much percentage each year goes up, and, you know, maybe is it something that you purchase before you have to use it and have it on standby while the cost is lower, you buy it, say you buy it next year, we don't have to install it, you know, two or three years down the road, you save that money in 2025?
Yeah, I think what, what we've talked about most likely doing is rather than replacing all of the membrane cassettes all at once, it's, it's not just a single item, is looking at it and seeing, you know, at what condition the membrane is in, how easy it is for the water to pass through it and those types of things, and possibly just breaking it into, you know, maybe replacing a third of it one year, and then 50% of it the next year, and then some of the following years. So I think it's one of those issues where it's such a specialized item that there's not a whole lot of suppliers, and when we get to that stage, we're kind of at the mercy of what the market's going to be. And so we just going to have to be prepared this far out to be able to accept what those prices are going to be.
So it would pay us to pay it by ahead of time?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
还有什么问题?
So, you said, somebody's saying, so there's no way that we could look to see what other cities are currently made for a similar product and just kind of like keep an eye on what any current market is or any of that?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, we could just call the supplier right now and ask them what it's going to be, so.
I mean, they, they know what the, you know, material cost is, they just like, you know, how much pipe it costs.
Yeah. Yeah, and City Pendleton actually has a similar system in place, and so that's actually where we've been taking some of our advice on the real life expectancy of the membranes is, you know, how much life they've been able to get out of, out of using and that type of thing.
And I see that our cost estimates in here were about a 10% EDU increase over the next five years, kind of in line with our growth within the community. We had 210 home units this year, so that's estimating 150 or 160 or something on average every year, so that's a fairly robust growth pattern, right?
Yeah, and so, so you're probably looking at the pro forma that was adopted there. I wouldn't read too much into some of those EDU numbers. Like I said, I repurposed this from another project, and so I didn't spend too much time updating those EDUs. The EDU, though, that refers to equivalent dwelling units, and so when we're looking at 210 housing units that we had this past year in terms of equivalent dwelling units, we probably saw, you know, maybe 300 or so because you have things like the new elementary school, you know, that's a lot of equivalent dwelling units and that type of thing. So I, I wouldn't worry too much about the EDUs.
Okay. Other questions about?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, yes, I had wanted to ask about the roundabouts.
Yeah, roundabouts on the street plan, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to know, did you do a study to see how much would be for streetlights in some of those areas instead of a roundabout? Let me see, like, East Highland Avenue and First Street, is that where, where we stopped in or what's there?
Around about at First and Highland?
Yeah, it is, it says on, it's project number XT 9.0, and it says East Highland, Highland Avenue, First Street intersection.
Is that the high school?
Yeah, so, so it's calling for a, a roundabout? Because that's the one that we have scheduled for a traffic signal.
Those are probably, I think, some of the public traffic.
Yeah, there's around ST 70, that's second main.
Yeah, there was another on 7th main, but there was another one for West Orchard Street.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, the way that it's set up is we have the five-year planning window, that those are ones that we really plan on actually accomplishing. The ones on the appendix side of things, frankly, a lot of those come from our transportation system plan that got called out back in 1998 as far as intersections that we want to look at. The ones that sit in the appendix aren't going to get built until we decide to pull them into that five-year planning window, so they're going to be at least five years out. And if we decide to, to pull one from the appendix, that's the time that we would really get into, really analyzing, does this make a lot of sense to actually bring it into the, into the planning window?
Okay, and that's what you do a study as well? Okay, and that's what you do a study as well to see whether would you be more efficient around the dollars replaced, which would be more costly?
Yeah, and I think that's, again, kind of one of the good examples of the usage of adopting the CIP is prior to having the capital improvement plan in place, staff knew that there were, you know, pick an issue, you know, hanging out there, but they also knew that there would take a lot of effort or maybe some engineering work to really look at the issue before we decided whether or not it made sense to proceed or not. And so having the capital improvement plan in place and saying, yeah, this is one that we think is going to be important within that five-year window, it allows us to actually commit some time and effort and energy toward looking at some of those things before we advance them too far towards pulling the trigger in a budget.
And typically, engineers will tell us that a roundabout is cheaper to build. I mean, that, that's a pretty much a standard rule for them because lights and all that are much, they really increase the cost. Unless there's a lot of right of way to acquire, a roundabout's going to be cheaper on a general rule. But like Mark said, we would be, we'd be looking at it in detail before we make a final decision. But that's why one intersection might have that as a recommended, just because we've looked at it at a high level, that looks like a good solution, and in a general rule, that's typically a less expensive solution, so.
I think currently, the only thing on the area that looks like a roundabout would be the Harper Yearview one. Currently, there's nothing proposed in the city. We've got some way back historically on roundabouts, so still have to build up some community goodwill. That's never used appropriately. You know, I was just going to comment too about the CIP plan and also that the community is unaware, the city has done a great job of posting all of its current under-construted projects online. You can go on there and look at those projects and see what's currently being constructed or being proposed in the budget and opposed to budget and timeline and those sort of things. Michael Martin, who was the League of Oregon City's lobbyist, and Patty Molivo, who's the executive director of the League of Cities, was out last week. And they visited our recycled water plant and our water treatment centers and got a visit with our staff. So appreciate administration sharing them with them for the day. They were very impressed with our systems and what we got going on in our community and specifically identified with the CIP and our online transparency of what we're doing with public resources and the funding. So if anybody ever wants to know about what's going on with water and recycled water and streets, it's all available and accessible online and where a five-year outlook looks like. We also have a committee that's changing. Right? Little mix-up this year. So that committee has meetings on, I think, a quarterly basis. And we sit down and discuss that CIP plan in depth and talk about what's coming up and how much it's going to cost and how we can make adjustments and how we can save money and what makes most sense at the time. So there's always public participation opportunities at those as well.
Other comments, questions? Any public comment on water, wastewater, streets? Oh, yes, sorry, Counselor Blake.
Just wanted to add, I'd like to comment, the sidewalk project that we continue to have year in, year out. I really like where the, where the target area is for this upcoming year. There's a lot of kids that come after school or go to school using that Alana Streetway. But I appreciate that being a focus area for this year and it's a great program to continue to do year in, year out. A lot of miles of sidewalk to replace, but little by little, I think, we'll get it done.
All right, any public comment on water, wastewater and street, five-year CIP capital improvement plan? Sign on? Can I get a motion to approve CIP as presented?
Say.
That moved by Counselor Ron, seconded by Counselor Premer, that we approve the CIP as presented. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. You can have a slate. Thank you, Mark. Now we're on to electing the council president. Every two years, the city council has the opportunity to elect one of its peers as the council president, and they fill in for the mayor. I'm sure the mayor not be here or be present to run the meeting, they fill in for that. They also sometimes will fill in for the mayor in a public event if he can't do it as well. So I'm going to open it up to the floor for nominations and take those. Ms. Trump?
I would like to nominate Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, that nominated by Counselor Brown. Did I hear a sweet vote here, too?
Yes.
I nominate Judge Premer.
Okay. Judge Premer.
Service last four years. Good job.
You got one nomination for Counselor Brown, one nomination for Counselor Premer, any others? So do I have a second for Counselor Premer? Okay. Is there a second for Counselor Premer? So the way this is going to work, since we have two nominees, we're going to vote. And who gets the most votes will be the council president. Okay? So first up was Counselor Premer, follows the paper. I'll just go one by one. Counselor Parton?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No. Okay, so that's three. One, two, three, four. Okay, so Counsel Premer?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and I need to give, you say no? Okay, so four votes for Counsel Premer. So Counsel Premer is our council president for the next two years. Congratulations, Counsel Premer. It's a hard job.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve and willingness to be council president. Now we're going to move on to committee reports, committee reports and liaisons. Anybody wanting to join?
Yeah, so we had a EOTech meeting. One of the things that we did discuss is to change the frequency of our meetings. So instead of meeting once per month, we're going to be meeting once every two months. Along with that, we had like four subjects that we talked on. We talked about the barn expansion and where that project's at right now. Seems like right now we're ordering materials and those materials very much are going to be probably six months out. So it's got to be a push to see if the barn expansion's going to be ready by fair. So there was something coming down the pike, just trying to let the community know right off the bat. We've talked to all the stakeholders involved. And so we're going to really try to make a push for it to be complete, but it is kind of, we're at the mercy of the supply chain, so we're just going to do the best that we can with that. We've also talked about the field expansion. So as of right now, we did hit a little snag with the field expansion. Above, at this point, I believe we have about a million dollars in contributions towards the project. So they're going to continue moving forward on that project. The completion date still is to be determined. And so I just encourage the community to continue to support this project. This is a project that's going to not only beautify EOTech, but also bring a lot of opportunity to the youth in the area. Other than that, we officially made the switch, moving venue works over to the city of Hermiston. So now we officially have ownership control over EOTech facility in terms of us directly managing building. So we talked a little bit about the budget right now. So this is going to be the first year in operation and expect to see especially more financial data this full year. And other than that, we also discussed some branding research, talked about our logo, and we had a couple of studies that we kind of did amongst the community. Community seems to appreciate and like the city of Hermiston logo that we have. So trying to find a way to better brand EOTech is something that we're trying to do. As far as naming, it's still kind of up in the air. So we're just trying to do as much as we can of the facility to attract more regional activities as well as local. So I think that's it, but the mayor and the city manager will probably add in a little more on this thing. That's right, our, Mr. Podden's our vice chair and our next chair, Patrick. So Mr. Collins is going to be chairing the EOTech board, so put the board in his leadership in the next two great years. Got a lot to do around that.
Very good, others? Other committee meetings? Okay. All right, I'm going to move on to the meeting reports. I wanted to first start out thanking Mr. Premer, fellow member of the last council meeting. Appreciate your leadership running the council meeting. Again, welcome to the new councils. Thanks for joining us. I also want to say a special thank you. I gave that opportunity to thank Lord Davis and Philip Spencer Coon for their years of service. I think Laurie served twelve, twelve years, I believe.
Yes.
And Counselor Spencer Coon was two, two. So appreciated their length of service and supporting the community and volunteering essentially to make Hermiston a better place. So I want to say a special thank you to them as well. Had the mayors and city managers meeting last week. Lot of conversation around the path and you heard in the city manager report last Friday, they've lost their executive director, so they're out in front of the director. Lot of progress is being made, dirt's being moved, anticipation is, you know, hopefully this spring, you know, doing full on construction, getting people in housing, transitional housing unleashed. They have had the warming shelter open this evening or this winter. Twenty-five individuals have been coming on a semi-regular basis, averaging twelve to fifteen individuals a night at the warming shelter. That's currently, if the public is aware, of that healed series building. That will be transitioning out to Steffens, out to Path Project. So good progress being made there, seems like there's a lot of momentum to build and starting to move a lot faster. Good attendance, all the commissioners were there, including a new county commissioner and lieutenant there. And sheriff showed up, so we got a report from the sheriff's office. Did I miss anything, Mr. Smith?
I think that's, now that I do have to be worthy, but I got a lot of conversation around that.
I was also on a meeting last week with the governor's transition, I guess I could call her governor, because she's now governor as of yesterday, as of today. So the governor's transition team on housing homelessness, she's doing some regional conversations. Her staff is reaching out by region, Eastern Oregon, First Region, she reached out to. And so we're well represented. There was about twelve individuals on there from Ontario to Ormond and a lot of people giving input to the governor's transition team about housing homelessness and things that we need support and help with. Areas that we identify as successes and areas that we're struggling with. So just appreciated their willingness to reach out, to be satisfied and hear our concerns and be a part of, hopefully, the solutions moving forward, the renovations that are coming forward. I think the governor's office, I think she's coming out tomorrow with her plan on housing homelessness, so I look forward to what that looks like. I know she hosts it these, all across the state, the legal first one. So it was nice to be a part of that, EATAC to be a part of that, so I appreciated that and passed that along to the governor as well. We had an OCA board meeting last month, and I know Mr. Smith spoke about it. We got a new executive director, we hired Pat Molivo, who you guys are all familiar with, I think. I think it was an excellent hire, super excited to have her on board. Glad she decided to apply and run for the position. She's really great. Originally, she was hired as legal counsel for the League of Oregon Cities and has really kind of grown up in the administration position. She's still learning, but she's a hard worker, she cares about cities, she cares about the success of cities, she cares about her staff. She spent the whole entirety of your building of the staff and trying to support them and making sure that they have a quality working environment. And she really showed her leadership this last year, I think, kind of earned that position. And so super excited to have her on board now. We also brought on new board members in the League of Oregon Cities as well. McCann McDonald from Pendleton is a new board member. So we've got another east side representative on there as well as Robert Escapigo, he's from Long Island? Yes, yeah, Nissat. So another Eastern Oregon representative. So just some good support at the, at the league level. The mayor of Portland is going to be joining us as a member of our board. In the past, Portland has always had a seat at the table. They are the largest city, and so they've always been guaranteed a seat. We've had Amanda Fritz for a while, and then Carmen Rubio was the last member. Never had the mayors, and I've been there, and so maybe he will be sitting with us this year, so excited about that as well. But just some, you know, new board members brought in, kind of left to transition. I am your current vice president. So next year, you might president some years. So we travel a lot. If you guys aren't aware, we have an Eastern Oregon newly elected meeting. Hopefully, you guys are going to that, newly elected presentation. I found out today that we are the largest sign on so far of elected essentials. So fifty-nine regional counselors are going to be participating. It's an island city, so you know where Island City is, just outside of La Grande. So the capacity of the room is sixty-five, so you can't host too many more people. So kudos to Eastern Oregon for the participation, trying to be better board members. There's also a new mayor's consortium that's meeting in ninety-four, so two days of that vacation coming up, I believe, next week, eighteen, nineteen. And then the twenty-fifth, which is the following Wednesday, is the city's Capitol Day. City Day, City Day.
City Day of the Capitol.
Yeah, City Day of the Capitol. So hopefully, those of you that can participate, all of them, it's always a fun day. You get to hear usually from the governor, Speaker of the House, President of the Senate, and then talk about initiatives and policies that the league is trying to support going into session. And then we get to go over and talk with, we set up some time, Mr. Smith set up some time with Senator Hansel, Representative Smith, and Representative, you know, she has a district, she's very close to the district. So they've been gracious with their time and they've set some time aside. So if you guys can participate, great to have you join us to go over and lobby in support for Hermiston and our constituents that we represent. So it's always a fun day. If you haven't done it in the past, try and get it on your calendar. If you can't do it this year, next year, maybe just a week. Next year, they only do it on long session years, so.
Correct, two years.
Okay, so two years from now. The only other thing I had, Mr. Smith, is we're, we're going to be required to do recycling. And so we're going to be doing some more media outreach and conversations about that coming up. My public feedback would be with our new contractor is to make sure we pick up the cardboard recycling more frequently around the poll. Those things are overflowing. I went two weeks in a row, they're just bulging. So maybe they need multiple pickups a week or something. That's all I have. Counselor? Yes, Ms. Trump?
Well, I too would like to welcome our new counselors, even though they're not really new, new, because at some point, you guys have either, you've attended several of the meetings and you've also had the opportunity to serve. So I thank you for your service and welcome. I also wanted to publicly thank Chief Adnison and staff and all of those that were involved in making the Christmas Express such a successful event once again. And of course, thanks to the schools, that students, the families that contributed to the canned food drive that was held in all of the schools. I also want to thank Mr. Santa and Mrs. Claus for making it to some of the events and making it, you know, such a memorable time for, for the kiddos. Thank you for your time. I also want to thank publicly Commissioner Nerdal during his service in the county. We have a one- We have a lot of positive things, you know, that he was involved in and how he was my former boss at some point. So, uh, I want to thank him for his service. Today is, uh, on Monday, actually, the ninth, uh, was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I want to thank Chief and his staff. Um, I know that it's a thankless job and, um, you know, we have a pretty safe community where we still have the ability to know a lot of the police officers, so, um, we're in a pretty good community, I, I would like to say, uh, or in my opinion. Um, and so a lot of it has to do with your leadership, a lot of it has to do with the fabulous staff that we have, so we're pretty fortunate, and so, thank you. Um, I also am excited about our new student councillors. We have, you know, a new batch of, um, student councillors, so we welcome them onboard as well. Parks and Res, um, our programs continue to recruit a lot of kiddos that are attending a lot of the programs over the winter, keeping them safe, keeping them engaged, and just keeping them, you know, uh, in a safe place. So thank you to our Parks and Res, um, staff members as well. And then I was just curious about City Day at the Capitol, how many, um, of you are planning on attending? It's on January twenty-fifth. Okay, all right, well, that gives me in on a idea, and, um, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Prenton. So we have, um, new student council reps?
Yeah, they, uh, a new, some of them are the same, but some additional ones wanted to participate with all of you. So tonight, we, we weren't able to get all the name tags, uh, made, but, uh, she could, I bet she could introduce herself.
All right, we had somebody kind of hiding down there, couldn't see her. Please introduce yourself, I'm sorry I didn't see you earlier. Welcome.
Uh, good evening, my name is Lydia Vanderstel, I am a Hermiston High School senior.
Okay, welcome, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Lynn?
Thank you. First, I want to start off by thanking, um, city manager, Mr. Smith, for taking on tours last year. I had the opportunity to meet with the different department heads. I toured the, the police department and heard the vision of Chief Edmisten. I saw improvements that have transpired over the years for, uh, recycled water. The computer upgrades that have transpired in public water department, the library improvements, and the future development of local parks. And under the leadership of Chief Stanton, Hermiston Fire Department is the best in the state of Oregon. I knew Hermiston had an airport, however, when I toured it, I was amazed at how beautiful it was. I recommend everybody to Hermiston, go there and tour, it is awesome. And I listen to the hopes and dreams of expansion of an airport in the future, and I hope that that does happen. And all knowledge department head was very impressive, their compassion, knowledge, and desire to keep Hermiston on track efficiently, effectively, and run as smooth as possible. I commend them and desire to work with them as we go forward in the next few years. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Prenton, for helping me with these buttons on this here. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jackie. Good to have you. Others? Yes, Councilor Prenton?
Um, yeah, I too wanted to, uh, echo some of the sentiments that, uh, Ms. Prenton did. Uh, the, I, I do know that Mrs. Claus and Mr. Claus were happy to participate in a lot of the things that was off on the, uh, from what I understand. And, uh, the Christmas Express, you know, participation in that, that was, that was well, well, uh, that you guys, you guys done good, Jason. You know, it's, it's, you know, you, you're the driving force and, and, thank you. Uh, also, uh, again, as Ms. Prenton pointed out, there's my National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. There's several members in the, in the building here that are members of law enforcement, other families. And I want to thank each and every one of you guys that do the job every single day, putting life and limb at risk every single day. You know, some, it's, it's not a, it's not a, not a job that most people can do because of some of the things that take place. But the, the folks that we have working for our department and the various departments in this area, uh, the job that they do is beyond outstanding. You know, we, we have, we have a group of people here that work hard, that, that take the time to do the job as it needs to be done, as opposed to just be, for all intents and purposes, tailwhet chasers. You know, just going for the tickets, that's, that's not our thing, and it's, it's appreciated, so. Thank you to all, everybody who's involved with that. And finally, thank you for, uh, the, the, uh, nomination and correction of this, of the council president, and I hope we do as good a job as you expected, so.
Okay, others? Mr. Smith? I'm sorry, did I just get over the youth advisor? Did you want to say something, so you decided to introduce yourself?
Uh, I will give a brief update of the things that have been happening for school. Um, during, or prior to our Christmas break, we had a blood drive, and I know there are, I think, fifty to sixty participants that signed up to get blood, so that was awesome. Um, we also had a canned food drive and winter drive going, so it was, um, canned food, like you said. Um, and then, uh, winter supplies, so hats, gloves, and it's still going, but we've had lots of donations, and so that's awesome also. Um, and then just continuing on, there are lots of winter sports, so basketball games, wrestling, so. Come and support with the school, and all of the, um, athletes will appreciate it very much, so, thank you.
Very good, uh, you have had any relationships at school, or do you?
I would.
I thought the name sounded familiar, frankly. Well, welcome again. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Uh, if you remember a few months ago, um, Mr. Tubby and I were, before you asking for approval to sign some agreements related to the opioid settlement nationally. Uh, we just recently received our first, um, allotment from that, and, uh, uh, in a couple of weeks, um, Ms. Files and myself will have a meeting to kind of talk with some, with CCS and the county about some potential ways we can partner with them on, on using that, using those funds. And so that's a, a great thing, you know, that we can try to use to, to improve our community, so. The other item I just wanted to, um, Northeast Oregon Now has already kind of written a, a follow-up story, but, uh, an online magazine called Business View Magazine did a special, uh, article on city of Hermiston. Uh, they didn't, uh, quite give me a heads up when it would be published online, but, uh, I'll, I'll send out to all of you the link to that. You can see, and, uh, it's also been linked up to that Northeast Oregon Now, uh, website. But, uh, just kind of a, another way to get our name and, and, uh, ideas out there in front of, uh, hopefully additional businesses that might want to come locate here, so. Just wanted to inform you more about that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, uh, nothing else, good order. All right, we are adjourned.